Hello everyone. Hopefully, uh, hopefully we got some, uh, some people that are gonna be, uh, coming on and, hopefully watching. Boy oh boy. Uh, first let me say, I, I voted today, uh, as you can see, yes. Uh, the polls were open today from one to five, uh, they're already closed, but they will be open tomorrow as well. Um, and then of course, uh, on election day. Board of Elections is gonna be, uh, taking the early voting, so I would exercise, or I would let you, remind you to exercise, uh, your right to vote, um, and encourage you to, uh, get out there and, uh, and, and do some voting, let your voice be heard. You know, honestly, I'm, I'm here downtown, uh, walking down this beautiful, multi-use path which makes it so safe for me to walk down. Uh, and it looks great and it's, uh, it's really awesome, uh, to be able to have something like this, uh, in our city. I've wrestled around with this idea of, um, defending myself a little bit, uh, you know, I've, I've, I've done a, a great job, I think, of, um, having such integrity and character, um, while running my campaign. Um, I've taken a lot of hits and a lot of blows, um, a lot of underhanded comments, and, um, I'm not the only one, uh, unfortunately, who has, uh, received lots of criticism, uh, for the work that I've done in this community. And honestly, um, so has our city, um, organizations, um, and things of that nature. You know, it's, um, it's frustrating sometimes, um, to think that, you know, these things are supposed to like happen, um. You know, it's, it, the whole process of, uh, the election has, has really shown me a lot of things and, um, one of the things that, that really pops out is the fact that great people, um, who do great things, don't end up running, um, for reasons of what I'm about to talk about here in a few minutes. You know, it's, it's kinda sad, um, disturbing and can sometimes be demoralizing, uh, when you receive such attacks. And it's just not on a personal level, um, I'm talking, um, as a city, as a whole. All of us, as a community, as an organization, uh, who's, who's done great things. So, let's, let's start off with this, profiles that the Portsmouth Daily Times put out. So they, uh, they have this, uh, these profiles, so go get a paper, uh, read the profiles for yourself. I think, uh, I really do think that you can really be informed, um, and make an informed decision the more you know. So I would really, really encourage you to purchase one of those, uh, from the Daily Times. My opponent, Joey Sandlin has, really honestly, uh, has made this whole process, uh, really disgusting, um, for a lack of better terms. In his profile, he talks about stuff like being pro-business. And, you know, this is a guy, um, who claims to be pro-business, uh, but he's unaware of all of the businesses that are actually in our town and currently renovating buildings and, um, and who've already moved here and currently, open for business. You have places like, uh, Eighty-three Suites or, uh, the River City Adventures Club, um, Southern Ohio Axe Throwing, the Donut Distillery. The Glockner, uh, is now renovating the Kelly's Carpet Building to, to bring more jobs into our city. Um, you have the Old Lantern, which is, um, gonna be a nice restaurant, they're renovating that building. Um, you have a computer repair business, uh, you have a gaming lounge, a music lounge, uh, you're gonna have another gaming lounge, a hall, uh, wine and beer and cigar rooms, or lounge, I'm sorry. You're gonna have e-gaming sports arena, um, who teamed up with Shawnee State University. You're gonna have a music and art lounge. Amelia Gray just, uh, announced that they purchased the Party Connection Building and gonna turn it into a resort and spa. Um, you have two new barber shops. You've got, um, the, uh, the women's boutiques, um, you've got children's museum, Candyland Museum, all of which are new businesses. So if city council and myself, because I am part of city council, if we are not pro-business, then how did we create already a city where all of these businesses are encouraged to come and spend their money to invest in our community? Just seems a little proactive to call me out, uh, personally and say that I am not pro-business, when in fact, I have helped many of these businesses overcome obstacles and hurdles, um, and given them direction, um, to be able to continue to make improvements to our city. So these businesses that I've mentioned, uh, some of them are already open, um, and there's, there's, there's people who work there, of course, which brings revenue to the city. Uh, there's income tax there, there's sales tax there, so to say that city council is not pro-business is false, it is a lie. Uh, the criticism that we receive as a city is sickening and disgusting. Um, and frankly, like, I've been sitting back just in awe of the lack of knowledge. The lack of knowledge that is going on, uh, with some of these candidates, I, I just don't, I don't get it, I, I don't understand. It's, this is all public information, do your research and you would know that all these businesses are here. So, seems a little redundant to call city council non-pro-business when, in fact, we have, I don't know, twelve, thirteen new businesses coming in and we have more that may show up. So, you know, it's, when I look back, you know, we, we as a city, we've allowed these individuals, uh, the opportunity to, um, to bring their ideas and entrepreneurs, um, entrepreneurships really, to our city, um, and, and that's, to me, that just goes to show how pro-business we are. So to say we're not pro-business, like I said, I just, let's, uh, let's move on to a couple of other things that I've, um, I've had to kind of endure, you know, sitting back and, and running my campaign with such integrity and character, um, and then allowing this man to just pummel all of what we've done and what we've been able to accomplish as a city together. You know, not only has he attacked organizations, but he's also attacked city council. I think it's really important to understand that when someone who has the knack, lack of knowledge attacks our city and attacks the organizations who have done great things in our city, I, at some point, I have to stand up and speak out. Because without these organizations doing the things that they've done for our city, I don't know where we would be, honestly. Um, think about it. You know, how can you count on a leader to work for you when he blatantly just doesn't understand why we have these organizations doing what they do? It's just, it's frustrating, um, especially when, you know, I'm, I, I think I've, I've done a very great job of being a part of my community and, um, and it's just, it's very disheartening to know that someone who has never been a part of anything related to our community is allowed to criticize the individuals and the organizations that have put in tons of work. Um, and without these organizations doing what they do, we wouldn't have a lot of the things that we do. You know, people are like, "Well, what organizations are you talking about, Edwin?" Well, I'm gonna tell you what organizations I'm talking about. Uh, organizations like, uh, Connex, uh, Samba, Main Street Portsmouth, Friends of Portsmouth, Fourteenth Street Community Center, Southern Ohio, um, Autism Project, you got the Welcoming Committee, um, you've got, you know, Portsmouth Street Art Project, Watch Me Grow, Friends of Green Lawn, Portsmouth Unity Project, uh, Serve Day Committees, um, you know, Bony Fiddle, Final Fridays, you know, those are all organizations and many others. Some of which I've, I've, I probably volunteered and I just kinda forgot, uh, to mention you, but there's so many more, um, who have done great things for our community. So when you attack small groups, when you say on your social media that, you know, councils corrupt, city, the city government's corrupt and they're just trying to, you know, all these small groups and organizations, well, you, you know what? When you're talking about me and what I've done for my, my community and my city, then you're talking about all of the organizations that I've volunteered for, and I have volunteered for just about almost every organization in our committee, in our community. And that's very frustrating, that's very frustrating for me because, you know, I've put in a lot of work and if I can feel the frustration from something like that, then I can only imagine what other people are saying and what other people are, um, how they feel. And they put in more work than I have. You know, and it's, it's disgusting. Um, you know, it's, it's, I just can't, you know, when we talk about events, okay, well, what events? Alright, uh, events like, uh, Winter Fest, for instance. Does that do anything for our community? Absolutely. Under attack, being criticized. You've got, uh, River Days, Soul Food Music Fest, Blues Brews Barbecue, Serve Day, Fourth of July, Farmer's Market, you know, Cleanup Days. Cleanup Days that are put on by these organizations. Without these organizations, Cleanup Days don't work. Who else is gonna go out there and do it? But, you wanna criticize these organizations and, and, and people, and, and frankly, I'm, I'm, I can't, I can't just sit back and, and just let you talk bad about our city that way. You know, he, he's, he's claimed to be pro-police and, you know, he received the endorsement of the, uh, Police Department, which is great, good for you, man, I'm, I'm glad you did. But you failed to mention that there are other endorsements out, out there that are frankly just as important. And one of them is the endorsement from the community and the city, the people of the city. It's great to have the endorsement of the Police Department. It is, but I think that, I really do think that, you know, our community is just as important and having that endorsement from the community is just as important. Let's talk about being pro-police for a second. You know, I've had to sit back once again, let you rant and rave about how great and how pro-police you are, but yet, you have yet to go to any community event that was put on by the Police Department. As a matter of fact, if I remember correctly, which I, um, I'm still feeling some of that, uh, sugar overdose pretty much, um, I was there at the Feeding the Community Event and I was the one who, um, entered into a donut eating contest with the Police Department. Where was Joey Sandlin? He wasn't with the police, but he claims to be pro-police. Frustrating, super frustrating. Once again, we're going through all of these different motions and, you know, these individuals are just so disgusting and I just can't, I can't sit back and let this keep going on and on and allow him to continue to attack and attack. You know, in his profile with the Portsmouth Daily Times, he mentions that, um, he mentions that the, I'm so sorry guys, I, I just, it's, it's been, it's been, uh, it's definitely been an experience that I, uh, I may not wanna endure again. This is, this has been just so disheartening that someone would say these types of things about our community. You know, as a city, we fight, um, you know, we, we fight to make it a better home, essentially, for, you know, all of, all of us, all of our kids, our youth, even to make it a better home for other people to come and live in. And as a city, I think it's really important for us to, to really band together, um. In this moment of division, when, when we have someone who is, um, blatantly just completely disregards a lot of the work, um, and a lot of the, a lot of the, the great things that this city has to offer, you know, I moved here seven years ago, eight years ago almost, and this has been probably, this is the best place I've ever lived, and I've, I've lived in Florida, I've lived in Ohio, I've lived in Cleveland, I've lived in, um, in Lorraine, um, and it, it really has been this place I call my home. And with all of the work that I have done in this community, uh, with all of the work that all of these organizations who have done great things in our community, um, bear with me, I'm gonna take a, I'm gonna sit down right quick 'cause I'm kinda tired, um, you know, that's a lot of walking, you know, I, I walked yesterday, um, which was great to see, uh, you know, a community that, uh, that has banded together, um, to support, uh, one of our own, right? And, you know, as I think about what, what can we do as a city now, um, I think that we have an opportunity here to really put forth the effort, um, into being the type of community that we want it to be and not what someone criticizes it to be. You know, since day one, my opponent has, he has, Joey Sandlin, has made it a point to continue with his smearing campaign. It's all over his Facebook page, it's all over Scioto County Daily News, um. And like I said before, like I sat back and just watched and, and, and let, let the punches keep hitting. And I think, um, like I said, I've had enough, um, of all of his criticism towards all of our work. Um, and I say ours because we are one. We are a community, one community. We are one city. And he's made it a point to make this smearing campaign against city council. But, um, in his profile with the newspaper, specifically says that he's going to, uh, do a great job at working with city council. Now, how exactly are you gonna be able to do that? Because the last time I checked, all you're doing is criticizing and you're dividing people. Who's gonna wanna work with you? Go ahead, I'll wait. I hear crickets. No one, no one's gonna wanna work with you. You know, nothing that I'm saying is untrue, nothing that I'm saying is false. You can go on his Facebook page and you can see it, you can go outside of County Daily News and see it, you can go and buy a newspaper and see what he's saying now, currently. And what he's saying currently is that he's gonna work well with people and organizations and small groups that are doing great things for our community, but yet, he was singing a different tune whenever he was, uh, you know, talking on his Facebook page and, you know, I feel like I, I feel like I have a responsibility as a city councilman. I feel like I have a responsibility as, as a citizen, um, of this community and the city. I feel like I have a responsibility as a human being, um, to inform the public about, uh, some of these, some of these antics and some of these, some of these things that are just so disheartening, so disheartening and how are you as a citizen, how are you, um, as a voter, supposed to make an informed decision? When all my opponent has been saying, um, Joey Sandlin, the only thing that he's been saying are, you know, vague promises, lies and criticisms. Is that what you want? I mean, I know I don't. Do we want someone that has a proven track record? Like myself? Uh, do you want someone who's been running their campaign with integrity and, and character? And honesty? Someone who works great with others? And not because I'm saying so, but because I've proven it? You know, these are, these are the type of things that, like I said earlier, these are the types of things that make good people, great people, who do great things for our community not wanna be involved with politics. And that's sad. Because there's so many people out there who can do great things, but aren't given the opportunity or they won't even try because of people like Joey Sandlin. So, starting to get dark now. My wife is probably wondering where I'm at unless she's watching, which she probably is watching. Let me leave you with this. If you play back all of the things that I have just said, the facts of Joey Sandlin saying that we're not pro-business and we are, in fact, we have all those businesses that I listed, plus more, that have already invested money into our downtown area. There is the criticism to the organizations that, like I said, have done great things for our community, um, and without them, and I've listed most of them, like I said, I probably forgot a couple and I apologize. But without a lot of those organizations, who are we as a city? What do we do? Without the volunteers that put in hard work, clean our streets up, beautifying our, our areas, where are we? What kinda world do we want, what kinda city do we want? I for one, wanna continue the growth that we have. I for one want to continue working with all of these organizations, um. And I wanna continue to fight for what's right. You know, you know, we talk about what's right and what's wrong all the time, but when, when we see someone doing the wrong thing, a lot of us stay silent. And, you know, I can't help to think about, you know, what, how, how would I want my children to, to respond to someone like Joey Sandlin? And of course, I want them to do the right thing. But I would encourage everyone to speak up and don't let someone who has openly criticized all of the hard work that you have done. Not me, you. I encourage you to speak up. Let them know that it's not right, let them know that it's wrong. So if you approve this message, I know I do. I'm Edwin Martell, I approve this message, I think I have to say that, as a disclaimer anyways. If you agree with me, if you agree that, that the good people in our city deserve better, then by all means, man, I, I, I encourage you all to go out and vote. You know, November second is the day, the polls are open from six-thirty in the morning to seven-thirty at night. If you have to vote at the Life Center, you will be, um, hopefully seeing me and some volunteers, uh, which I would love to have some more volunteers, if anybody wants to contact me, by all means, um, I'm definitely gonna need some help. But, you know, honestly, man, I'm just, I'm so, I'm so tired of, I'm so tired of the bashing, I'm tired of the criticisms, I'm tired of the lies and I'm, you know, tired of the empty promises. We don't, uh, we as a city, we've come a long way, we have come a long way, but we don't deserve that. We do not deserve to be treated We do not deserve to be treated with such disrespect. Make your voice be heard. Go vote. And if you are supporting me, of course, remember, you gotta write in Edwin Martell. See y'all later. Bye.